Welcome to the sixth hearing of the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the government's management of the COVID-19 pandemic. The inquiry is intended to provide ongoing parliamentary oversight to the government's response to the unfolding pandemic. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land that this parliament is on, and pay my respects to those elders, past, present, and emerging, and including the respects of the committee and the witnesses we have here today. This morning, we will hear evidence from witnesses from the agriculture portfolio, including the Minister for Agriculture and Minister for Western New South Wales. Through our programme of public hearings, the committee has heard evidence on the government's response and assistance packages offered to industries and sectors in largely urban city settings. Today's hearing shifts the focus to consider the government's response and what assistance is being offered to the state's primary producers across New South Wales. The sector is still recovering from some of the state's worst bushfires and is now having to navigate major COVID-19 challenges and disruptions. Today's hearing will explore a range of issues around impacts to the agricultural sector, including what help primary producers have been offered to navigate such challenges. I would now like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website. The transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. I would also remind media representatives you must take responsibility for what you publish about the committee's proceedings. It's important to remember that parliamentary privilege does not apply to what witnesses may say outside of their evidence at the hearing, and so I urge witnesses to be careful about any comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence, as such comments will not be protected by privilege. The guidelines for the broadcast of proceedings are available from the secretariat. All witnesses have the right to procedural fairness in accordance with the procedural fairness resolution adopted by this House in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, Minister, your adviser, you can take the question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. I remind everyone here today that committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. I would therefore request that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the terms of reference of this inquiry and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. We'll now turn to the swearing of the witnesses. Minister, I remind you, you do not need to be sworn, as you've already sworn an oath to your office as a member of parliament. But, Mr Hanson, if I could ask you, please state your full name, your position, title, and the agency, and then take either an oath or an affirmation, the words of which are in front of you.
Thank you, Chair. Scott Hanson, Director General, New South Wales Department of Primary Industries. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thanks, Mr Hanson. Minister, if you'd like to take the opportunity for a brief opening statement, now is that time.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. Just briefly, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you this morning and answer questions, but to discuss, I guess, the challenge that confronts all with COVID-19 pandemic and the impact that has on the agricultural portfolio. I guess the story for agriculture, you touched on it in your opening, Mr Chair, is in the last few years, the agricultural sector has faced three main challenges and disruptions: drought, bushfires, and now COVID-19. And ironically, unlike probably a lot of sectors that you've heard from in this inquiry and more broadly across government, COVID-19 has actually been the least disruptive on the agricultural sector of all three of those. In the time of COVID-19, we have seen one of the positives. The community, I think, has been very firmly focused and reminded of the importance of food security, the importance of supporting and buying local, and the incredible value the agricultural sector makes to the community, in fact, to the staples in everyone's lives. In terms of management of the pandemic, very early on in March, at my request, the Department of Primary Industries established 10 industry working groups to work across the whole agricultural sector. Those working groups comprised representatives of all the major subgroups or subsectors of the portfolio to make sure that we understood the major issues the various industries were confronting, and to provide assistance through our concierge one-on-one service, as well as website hotline that was established. We had around nearly 580, 600 inquiries to that so far that have been worked through, and a number of issues that industry was facing at the time have either been satisfactorily resolved to the industry's satisfaction or are in train at the moment. So I think by and large, the COVID-19 pandemic remains a challenge, but for the agricultural sector, it's almost as if as soon as the pandemic started, seasonal conditions began to turn round. We saw some good widespread rain, and there's a lot more, the irony is, there's a lot more confidence in the sector today during the pandemic than there was, say, just six months ago before the pandemic started. And happy to assist the committee in any way I can, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Minister. The difference a bit of rain makes is extraordinary.
Rain and hope.
Yeah. I'll now hand over to Emma Hurst for the first round of questioning.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Minister, and thank you, Mr Hanson, for coming in today. During the lockdown, there was quite a lot of media around the use of animals in entertainment and various business, including big organisations like Taronga Zoo that were very concerned about the impact of lockdowns would have on their finances and being able to provide ongoing care to the animals. Are you aware of any animals that were euthanised or who fell into ill health in these industries as a result of the income loss during the COVID-19 lockdowns?
No, I'm not aware of any that fell into ill health as a direct result of COVID-19 and the lack of income. I am aware, and Mr Hanson might want to expand, on issues that were at a number of zoos or exhibited facilities that come under the Exhibited Animals Act, but none that I'm aware of that directly relate to breaches of animal welfare, because a facility may not have had any money to properly care for their animals, no.
Thanks. I know about the federal money that went into these industries, but were there other issues that came up, Mr Hanson? As the minister sort of alluded, you might have more information.
Thank you. So there were 31 of our exhibited animal facilities in New South Wales that were eligible under the Commonwealth package. That obviously left a range of facilities that weren't available or made available, the assistance from the Commonwealth with regards to assistance for them for feeding and caring for animals. DPI staff reached out to all of the licensed exhibited animal holders in New South Wales early on in the pandemic to take a check as to how they were faring, how they were coping. We're not aware of any animals that had to be euthanised due to ill health directly related to the pandemic, but that's something we can take on notice and provide any data on.
Yeah, that would be useful, thank you. I mean, we also had a lot of facilities reach out and say that they were concerned about income loss. On the weekend, there was a couple of media articles, and there was another media article this morning in The Guardian, particularly about one facility, Dolphin Marine Conservation Park in Coffs Harbour, who says in the article that the impact of coronavirus has hit their facility very hard, to the point where they're actually asking now for finances from the government to build a semi-open sea enclosure. Have you been contacted about that, and are you open in conversations with them about that in response to COVID-19?
I certainly haven't been approached, Ms Hurst. It sounds like, though, from the way you've characterised that media article, that they're not so much looking for support to maintain what they're doing, but to actually undertake a capital expansion at the facility.
That's what the article says, yes.
No, I'm not aware of that, and it's likely they wouldn't approach me, because within the agricultural portfolio, we don't have funding programmes that fund capital expansion at those facilities. They might be best to approach other ministers within the government who have funding programmes, perhaps under the tourism portfolio or regional development.
I thought they were trying to sell out.
Apparently not, not according to The Guardian this morning.
There we go. That's the definitive argument.
They want to retire the dolphins.
It may not be a surprise, Ms Hurst, I don't often read The Guardian.
Cue outrage from the opposition.
Minister, I mean, given that there's a lot of these facilities that do fall under the Exhibited Animals Act, that are still saying that they're financially very strained because of the COVID-19 lockdowns, is there any sort of pre-planning in place in case there is a second wave and there's further shutdowns that happen?
Well, what the Department of Primary Industries has done, Ms Hurst, as Mr Hanson said, is that those facilities that have not qualified for assistance through the Commonwealth government, our Department of Primary Industries staff have been in close consultation, working closely with those facilities. Obviously, from this portfolio's perspective, our only concern is both from Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act and the Exhibited Animals Act. In terms of the financial viability of those businesses, whilst that is a matter of concern, it's not the primary concern of this portfolio. Our concern is making sure that those businesses are able to adhere to their responsibilities under those two pieces of legislation which I administer in this portfolio. And I haven't had any formal advice nor any approaches directly from any of those particular organisations raising any concerns that they can't meet those obligations. Obviously, if there were issues that were to come to my attention, that would arise, that, say, a facility was to go bust or go belly up, or there are issues, obviously that's then, that is a situation where we would be taking more serious action to make sure that those animals were looked after.
Thank you. During the COVID-19 lockdowns, I mean, we heard about a reduction in people reaching out for domestic violence, but when I spoke to both the RSPCA and the Animal Welfare League, they said that they had also seen a reduction in outreach for their services and also a reduction in the reporting of animal cruelty. And I think that that makes a lot of sense when you consider if people are in lockdown, they're not witnessing a lot of animal cruelty, and also if people are in lockdown, they're potentially less likely to reach out for help. Are you aware of a reduction in animal cruelty reporting during those lockdown periods as well?
Yes, I am aware that there has been a reduction, as you said in your introduction, yeah.
Do you have any of the statistics, and perhaps it's something you could take on notice, about that particular reporting period?
Yeah, I'd have to take that on notice, because as the enforcement of POCTA is done by RSPCA, Animal Welfare League, and the New South Wales Police, we don't hold that data, or I don't hold it, neither does the department, but we can take that on notice and request that and provide that to the committee.
Thank you.
Did you want to specify particular time periods?
Just when the lockdown period started, so, yeah, that would be fantastic. Did the government take any steps to ensure people can still report animal cruelty, or was there additional funding or support to alleviate that issue of a reduction in reporting?
No, it's, I mean, the normal ways of reporting are still there, and unimpacted by COVID-19 restrictions, people can make complaints, I understand.
Sorry, but with the reduction, and the highlight of that reduction, was any action taken to fix that problem in any way?
Might be that there were less events of that cruelty.
No, well, that, I mean, no, I wouldn't.
I don't think so.
I mean, to assume, to ask, I mean, the premise of that question is that a lower reporting rate is a bad thing, and therefore government may want, may need to intervene. It could well be that actually there is just less incidence, I don't know. But certainly, from my perspective, I couldn't see that COVID-19 restrictions in any way impeded people making reports if they were aware of breaches of the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act. COVID-19 restrictions did not impact people making phone calls, writing emails, or writing letters, which are the three primary ways that complaints are made, is my understanding.
How are the operations, the day-to-day operations of the RSPCA and the Animal Welfare League affected? Obviously, they had to close down public access to their shelters. How were they affected, and what support was given to them?
Well, in terms of their enforcement duties under POCTA, I'm not aware of any significant changes, although I would presume that, like all of the Department of Primary Industries or local land services staff, staff would have been given strong guidance about distancing and putting human health and safety first, but I'm not aware of any significant impediments to their enforcement duties for either of the three enforcement agencies, certainly none that have been brought to my attention. And during the pandemic, I have had conversations with the RSPCA, and no such issues were raised with me on that occasion.
And the shelters?
I'd have to take that on notice, unless Mr Hanson has the information.
So we were aware of decisions by RSPCA and Animal Welfare League around shelters and around visitation to shelters. However, we, like the minister, we maintained a close dialogue with both RSPCA and Animal Welfare League during the duration of the restrictions from February through to now, and have had no requests from them or indication from them of additional assistance being required to help accommodate any downturn or any restriction on them in carrying out their compliance requirements as necessary under the Act. I certainly know that our biosecurity and food safety compliance teams really haven't been impacted, with probably one large exception, and that is our food safety team's physical onsite auditing of healthcare facilities was significantly changed in terms of how we went about that and why we did that, because of the vulnerable people and the risk of our staff entering those sites and visiting numerous of those sites as part of the audit regime. But with the exception of that, our audit frequency and our inspection frequency certainly didn't get impacted during those restrictions.
What about in regards to the introduction of regulations to extend the limitation periods for the enforcement action under POCTA? My understanding was that the RSPCA and the Animal Welfare League said, well, they've told us in our consultation that they have been affected with their investigations having to slow down because of social distancing requirements and the like. Do you plan to introduce regulations to actually extend the limitation period under POCTA during this time?
Not unless the enforcement agency specifically requests that, a change to the status quo. I haven't received any request from either of those three enforcement agencies at this stage, but if such a request came through, of course, I would give it due consideration to make sure that, you know, the worst thing I would want to see is a potential perpetrator escape justice, or their day in court, or however you want to describe it, because of a legal quirk. So, yeah, obviously, if such a request was made, I'd consider it, but at this point, there's been no request.
Thank you. What about, we've also heard a lot of concerns that adoption rates and people buying companion animals went up during a lockdown, and now we're hearing reports and concerns, early concerns, that there may suddenly be a massive, a number of animals that have been abandoned, companion animals that will then get dumped into shelters. Has the government heard some of these concerns, and is there any support that's been considered if this does eventuate?
Well, you're certainly right that, I'm aware, I don't have the data in front of me, but I certainly am aware that adoption rates are up during, have gone up during the pandemic crisis, which I for one think is a wonderful thing. You know, the more animals that are adopted means the less animals have to be euthanised, but also if people are taking the opportunity while at home to bring a new companion into their home, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And we all know the benefits of bringing companion animals into your home for mental health, but also, in a lot of cases, physical health as well. I've noticed a lot more people out and about walking their new and old companion animals, and I think that's a wonderful thing. In terms of, I mean, I don't, I don't see any evidence, or haven't heard any reports this stage, that those higher adoption rates will mean that we will have a higher rate later down the line of people dumping those animals. A number of adoption programmes, the one that I'm most familiar with, the RSPCA, very successfully run across the state, they don't just let anyone adopt animals, and they don't do it indiscriminately. There's a very robust process that takes place that tries to ensure that the person taking the animal...
I guess it's not so much that the animals that have been adopted and rescued, but, you know, there was also an increase in sales of companion animals online and in various other situations. And in the past, where there's been, say, cheap animals or something else that has been, and also following on from that, an increase in abandoned animals. If we were to see the same pattern now, after we've seen an increase in, well, it could be a mixture of adoption, or it could be the animals that were bought, what will be done potentially by government for these shelters that are probably already overrun, who could see a massive influx of animals?
You see a black lining to every cloud, don't you?
Yeah, I might ask Mr Hanson to address that, but it's hard, I don't, well, I certainly hope that doesn't happen, Ms Hurst, but, Mr Hanson.
No, thank you. So we have heard anecdotal reports that adoptions from the RSPCA have been up 30%, which is a significant increase. We haven't yet got to that point of getting any data that would suggest that that is leading this round to an increase in abandonment or animals being presented back to those shelters from which they've been sourced. If there was, we'd be quite happy to sit down with both the RSPCA and Animal Welfare League to look at what strategies, what communications, what promotional activities would be required to sort of help people through the decision-making process around what to do with the animals, given the fact that the decision about adoption has been made already. It's now, how do you help people through that, sort of, how do you look after the animals, how do you keep the animals, and if not...
Yeah, I have less concern about the adoption process, because as you say, there's a bit more of a process for people who are adopting animals, but it's more about these sort of impulse buys of animals, where people are buying a companion animal, for example, online that aren't going through an adoption process, that are now going back to work out of lockdown and haven't actually considered that animal's needs when they took that animal in.
And we have no data on that leading to increased presentation of abandoned animals or animals being abandoned to shelters.
Okay, but if there was, if the RSPCA and the Animal Welfare League did see an influx, you would be supporting them through that?
We would sit down with them and work through what strategies are needed to accommodate that.
During the COVID-19, and this might be a question for you, Mr Hanson, has it affected the timeline for the Animal Welfare Action Plan going forward?
If, only slightly. We've still been able to maintain a lot of the consultation, public consultation and documentation via virtual consultation with industry groups and with the community, so that timeline still remains largely robust in place, as we've outlined before. So it's been one of the ones that hasn't been as impacted, because there have been alternative ways of being able to seek people's views.
Minister Marshall, in your introduction, you talked about industry working groups, and there was a lot of community concern during the COVID-19 outbreak around zoonotic diseases and the potential for zoonotic diseases within the country as well. There was reports in the media from a Dr Michael Gregor, who was talking about chicken farms being potentially the next pandemic, homegrown pandemic. Is that something that was identified as a risk for the industry in part of those industry working groups or elsewhere?
Thanks, Ms Hurst. There was a, as I said in my introduction, there were 10 working groups established. One of those was animal biosecurity and animal welfare. I'm not aware of that particular issue being brought forward by industry or identified as an issue that they would like the government or the Department of Primary Industries or local land services to work on. Mr Hanson, have you, has that come across your desk?
That working group didn't look at the potential impact or risk of COVID in terms of increasing or decreasing the risk of disease, animal disease outbreaks across livestock sector. Obviously, I think it must have been just before the start of the pandemic, we started to see African swine fever present itself up in Papua New Guinea and Timor-Leste, and, you know, those kind of diseases, we kept working with the Commonwealth to keep sort of a close watch on. But actually, for most of the animal industries, and in fact, for most of our agricultural industries, the reduction in people movements across different parts of the state actually act as an increase in protection in biosecurity. And so that wasn't particularly a topic, the topics that were covered by that group were more about appropriate PPE gear and availability of PPE for staff and for visitors, as well as talking about markets and market activity.
And what were the, in the industry working group for animal welfare, what was the key areas identified in that particular group?
Well, similar to a lot of the groups, Ms Hurst, some of the key issues that were raised were the short-term supply shocks and freight logistics. There was a lot of concern about movement of animals, but also movement of product off-farm if states were going to start closing their borders. Obviously, in New South Wales, we made a decision not to close our state borders.
Was that, like, so certain animals that would have to travel to a particular slaughterhouse, that, is that the sort of thing you mean, or?
Potentially, or even, or even getting product, egg, you know, egg producers getting their eggs to market. I mean, we...
I'm just talking about from an animal, obviously, that Animal Welfare Working Group.
Yeah, yeah, I am, yeah, and that was an issue raised, the seasonal workers, I mean, all of those, all of those industries, industry groups tend to raise key things around freight and logistics, care of staff, workforce in terms of seasonal workers, and the continuation of auctions, whether it's sale yards or other private places.
All right. Thanks, Ms Hurst. I'll hand over to the opposition now to Mr So.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Minister, are you aware of a letter sent by the Pew Charitable Trusts to the Premier on 26 March 2020, and to the Prime Minister shortly afterwards, proposing a COVID-19 economic stimulus set of measures in conservation and land management?
I can't say, by what institute, sorry?
It's called the Pew Charitable Trust, but it was a, it was a letter proposing an economic stimulus package to deal with COVID-19, signed by about 50 different organisations, including Landcare New South Wales and the New South Wales Farmers' Association. And what it was proposing was a multi-billion dollar package to deal with a range of measures such as, you know, rehabilitation work in the wake of the bushfires, repairing nature trails, and an awful lot of other work that seems to be necessary in pest and weed control, things that obviously there's never enough money for.
No, never.
But obviously, in the wake of bushfire drought and then the pandemic, there was a proposal for a sort of combined state and federal approach. Are you saying you haven't seen that correspondence?
I'm not, I've seen correspondence with, from the New South Wales Farmers' Association, which actually, in your descriptions, would be, sounds like it's very similar to that particular correspondence you're referring to, and I've had a number of discussions over the telephone with the Farmers' Association about a number of proposals that they're putting forward for stimulus, yes.
Yeah, I mean, this would provide, I think, at its peak, something like $24,000, $24,000 jobs for people to undertake practical conservation activities such as weed control, pest control, river restoration, bushfire recovery and resilience, and it's all pretty much set out. Those are the sorts of discussions you had with the Farmers' Association?
Correct, yeah.
And where are those discussions up to? Have you got a set of initiatives flowing from those discussions to propose?
There's a, there's a number of measures that government has in train at the moment in terms of drought assistance, bushfire assistance, that covers off on a number of those areas, and the government is looking to make some tweaks or changes to some of those existing initiatives, which will not only better provide, I think, better tailored support, given the changing seasonal conditions in COVID, but also serve to continue to provide economic stimulus. And there's a number of other measures, new measures, that they raise in their correspondence, which the government's currently considering at the moment.
Okay, but since, since, say, the 23rd of March, which I think is about when the sort of public health orders kicked in or were just about to kick in, what new measures have you as minister implemented in the sort of primary industries space to deal with the pandemic and its effects?
Well, most of the new measures revolve around either a combination of fee waivers, a combination of providing support to industry to either access new markets, to get clarification to ensure that they can continue to operate, getting exemptions or clarifying the interpretation or definitions within the public health orders. So, for example, excuse me, every single operator within the livestock sector, both agents and producers, were most concerned that the initial public health orders actually rendered public auctions at sale yards for sheep sales, fat cattle, store cattle, even wool auctions unable to occur because of the gathering, you know, the public gathering measures. So that was an area where immediately this portfolio was able to make the case that there should be an exemption to ensure that the food supply chain could continue to operate in New South Wales uninterrupted. That was agreed to, and indeed, on my weekly hookups with all the state agriculture ministers, us doing that allowed them to do exactly the same thing and use the same... allowed them to do exactly the same thing and use the same argument we use in their states as well, so that we're able to ensure continuity across the food supply chain in other states, not just in New South Wales. So the assistance that we've provided is, is been, I guess, a combination of a bit of financial help, taking a bit of the pressure off, but mostly just troubleshooting and using our working groups in our concierge service to virtually be guided by industry about what, what bits of help that they want. And most of them didn't want money, don't want that, they just want any restrictions or guidance so that they can continue to operate unimpeded to keep Australians fed and clothed.
Okay, and without in any way detracting from the utility of that work, I'm just trying to get a sense of what new policies or measures you as Minister have put in place since the pandemic period started to help industries deal with that, outside of the troubleshooting and clarification about the effect of public health orders? And what new money has been provided?
Well, I'm always considering new initiatives for, as industry raises issues and brings them forward. And that's why we established those ten industry working groups. And as I said at the beginning, virtually every single issue that they've raised has either been completely resolved to their satisfaction or is in train at the moment. There's a few additional measures that go to your question that I'll be announcing very shortly for targeted support in a financial way for particular industries in the primary industry sector that have been, that are unlike a lot of industries, have been actually negatively impacted. But broadly across the board, economically, the agriculture, most of the industries in the agriculture sector have not been adversely impacted. Because you've got to remember, we're coming off a pretty low base from drought and bushfires and COVID-19, sort of hasn't been able to wreak any more havoc than those first two things. So it hasn't, it hasn't had the negative impact broadly across agriculture that the pandemic has in other spaces in the state, largely because what generally happens in the agriculture sector is essential. And because of that, it's been able to act or conduct itself in a relatively normal manner, of course, physical distancing and all of those precautions because we need to eat, and so does the rest of the world. So, and despite all the restrictions around international travel, we've worked closely with industry and the Commonwealth to make sure our producers still have international market access, even to the extent of chartering, you know, getting access to charter flights to continue to get chill beef products into international markets in a timely way. I mean, yeah, and I'll always try and be as responsive as I can to industry. But generally, and I am being general, I can get quite specific, but generally, the industry's just been asking for logistical help or, you know, getting red tape out of the way so they can continue to function.
Is it more accurate to say perhaps, Minister, that the effect of COVID-19 has been masked by the breaking of the drought? That the breaking of the drought has had such a substantial positive impact that the negatives of COVID-19 have kind of been masked by that? Is that probably?
Possibly, or counterbalanced by the two, but I wouldn't characterise the conditions as the drought's broken, but certainly conditions have eased and things have got a lot better in a lot of parts of the state.
No, no one's suggesting it's broken, you can form that across the state.
And we were coming from a very low base, but most of the activities in the agricultural sector by their nature are quite isolating. I mean, aside from the processing plants like abattoirs and packaging facilities, and the Food Authority and the DPI have worked very proactively with those companies and organisations to make sure that we have safe workplaces and working with Safe Work New South Wales. But at the same time, we don't go down the path of other states where they actually made businesses have to so dramatically change their operations that there was questions about their ongoing viability. Got to keep people safe, but also got to keep the important work of the food supply chain going. So all in all, I think they've done a pretty good job so far.
But just outside of that, just returning to that set of measures proposed by Landcare, the Nature Conservation Council, Farmers' Association and others, you don't recall seeing that correspondence per se, but you've had communications directly with the farmers about those kinds of measures.
Correct.
And can you tell the committee whether or not as a result of those discussions, the government is going to propose some or any of the measures that they've been advocating since the end of March?
Yes, so I've got correspondence here in front of me, Mr Sewell, which I think covers off on most of the issues that you've raised. But it is from the New South Wales Farmers' Association, dated April. And yes, I've already had, I think, several discussions along with Mr Hanson and other officials from local land services in the department about a number of the measures they raise. And, yeah, the government is currently considering those and hopefully will make some announcements very soon about some of those measures. Obviously, as I've said to the Farmers' Association, and, you know, is that, you know, yeah, there, there's, it's not a, COVID-19 is not a blank cheque for a smorgasbord of initiatives that have always been asked for. But nevertheless, we will try and do within the finite resources that we have and best target the funding that we can secure to support the agricultural sector, but also stimulate it. And indeed, you could mount a very strong argument that and the bushfire assistance and indeed the $4 billion in drought and water security assistance has also been of economic stimulus as well. In fact, it's put the agricultural sector in the strongest possible position it could be before the pandemic started.
But you talked about the need for economic stimulus, and I think we can all agree that that is absolutely necessary. But just in your portfolio, it sounded like most of the new work that had been done was in the, in the area of fee waivers, which this government has announced a number of measures like that. And that's very different to actually putting new money directly into the economy, whereas these sorts of measures would, you know, by providing direct employment, work that is necessary would also provide a stimulatory effect. How soon can we expect an announcement on those kinds of measures?
I can't say, Mr Sewell, but soon.
Okay.
Mr Hanson, did you?
Sorry, if I could just pick on that, I guess, there's sort of been four elements to the response so far. The first one has sort of been the concierge service, the handling of the inquiries, providing assistance, literally doing everything from working with industry associations to getting answers through to working with individual, individuals who want to know what their rights, their rules, their requirements are. Then in terms of economic stimulus, since the pandemic, there's been the $310 million in the emergency drought relief announced, so that takes us through into the next financial year. $140 million bushfire industry recovery package and $209 million boundary fence recovery package out of the fires as well. All three of those are largely economic stimulus that are purchasing goods and services from local communities to be able to provide assistance. And so they've, they've been our targeted industry stimulus, but they've been targeted at assisting by creating stimulus to help recover from the drought and from the bushfires. Not so much just badged as a COVID economic stimulus package. In addition to that, however, remember that most of the businesses in our industry have also made themselves, or also had available to them, the broader package of assistance that's been made available, both at a state government level in terms of the $10,000 small business grants, as well as the Jobkeeper, Jobseeker assistance packages that are available from the Commonwealth Government. So there's been a suite of activities that have sort of been coming together to provide both that direct economic stimulus that you've been referring to, plus the targeted concierge service that we can provide.
Thanks, Mr Hanson. I wanted to come, move on to a different area around rural assistance, around the Rural Assistance Authority, Mr Marshall, and that's, or Minister, that, that's obviously an area where there is a direct financial impact on, particularly on producers who have been affected previously, not necessarily by the drought, but particularly by the bushfires. And they've got a number of loan repayments that are coming up. So can you tell me how many applications for deferral you've received?
I, as Minister, have received none. Those requests go to the Rural Assistance Authority. Do you mean how many requests have the Rural Assistance Authority received?
Yes.
I'd have to ask Mr Hanson, or we'd have to take on notice.
Is it still the case that those, or those applications for deferral are required to be in writing, that they can't be taken over the phone?
I'd have to defer to Mr Hanson.
So this is deferral of principal or interest repayments on RAA loans?
That's correct.
I'll have to, have to take on notice the process. We normally wouldn't just deal with a person's financial details over the phone without some verification, whether that be through email or through some other way. But let me check for that because I'm not aware.
Okay, well, there was a, there was a story in News Local on the 8th of April that said, that outlined the case of Mr Alessi, who is a commercial fisher in Port Stephens, in Salamander Bay. And he was outlining the situation where it was a dramatic increase, and this is understandably a, quite a significant increase, as you said, as they move from an interest-only to a, to a principal and interest situation. At the time, the department said that it was considering a range of industry assistance measures. Are you, have you got any new information, any new approaches for, for people who find themselves in this situation?
Well, in terms of that individual case, I would hope that they have made an application to the RAA for deferral. And I'd have to take that individual case on notice.
I'm not asking you about the individual case. The individual case highlights the problem that Mr Hanson outlined of people who are moving from an interest-only to a principal and interest loan during a period of extreme financial difficulty for them, that's been obviously started through the bushfire process, that's been exacerbated by COVID. This is one area within your portfolio.
That's your assertion.
That's the assertion of, of, of the, this gentleman, Mr Alessi, who says that his, and anyone who understands that an oyster farmer who in, who usually sells to restaurants who are now closed, who usually relies on tourists who come to the area that are no longer allowed to come, and particularly during the Easter period where that would be a peak period of demand, that this is an incredibly difficult period for them. And he and others found it incredibly difficult to deal with the RAA. Are you not aware of this issue at all, Minister?
I'm trying to work out you, which issue, the issue of people paying back their loans, like?
The issue of oyster farmers who find themselves in a very difficult situation. It's not just oyster farmers, there's a range of commercial fishers who find themselves in this situation up and down the coast that's been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. You said that most areas, or in fact, it seemed to be all areas within the primary industries portfolio are actually doing better.
That's not what he said.
That they, that they, during the, that they weren't, they weren't finding themselves in a difficult financial situation. This, this is an incredibly difficult situation that was exacerbated by the fact that it took him ten days. According to the guidelines on your website, for an application for a deferral under twelve months, it should be able to be taken over the phone.
Point of order.
Yes.
Other than the very long description of the issue, I'm not entirely sure what the question from the honourable member is to the witness. I just ask her to clarify what the actual question is that she's posing to him.
I'm trying to provide him with some context.
All right, I think, just to deal with the point of order, I think a member is allowed to give some context, but I think the context should be as brief as possible and we should try and get that rise in inflection as soon as we can, Ms Sewell.
I respect the direction of the Chair and I will move on. So is it still the case that that has to, the application has to be put in writing, even if it is for less than twelve months?
I'll take that on notice.
As I said before, my understanding is that our security and fraud settings means that we do need to take it in writing, generally by email, rather than just a phone call. But I can confirm that for you and come back.
And can you tell me if you're tracking the applications? Can you tell me how many you've received, if you're tracking applications or inquiries over the phone and, and also in writing?
Yeah, and so, if I can come, so we obviously have reached out to all of the key customers within the RAA, talked about the fact that if they're experiencing financial hardship to deal with this on a one-on-one basis in terms of deferral of payments, and that's an option that's available to everyone. I understand, though, your question is not about the individual, but about any blanket policy settings across a category of affected producers. And that's something that, again, I'd have to take on notice or we'll come back at a later time to be able to discuss.
Okay, and then perhaps you can take on notice, how much has the RAA given out in the last twelve months? And how many farmers have accessed that, that relief?
Yes.
Well, point of order, the last twelve, the point of order, that the last twelve months is not the period in which this committee's terms of reference are dealing with. We're dealing with the COVID response and it's all good and well to have an inquiry about how many people have made these requests, but it's not applicable to this inquiry. That's a budget estimates question.
Well, if what the member's asking for is to see the trend over the last twelve months, to see what if any impact COVID-19 has had, I could see how that would be.
Where it phrased that way.
Well, I'm sure that was the member's intent.
That's how I took it, but.
Yeah, so.
Could I ask a question, Mr Chairman? And I'm happy to take on notice and provide that detail.
Not technically, but we will allow you this moment.
I'm just seeking a point of clarification.
Yes, you can do that.
From Ms Sewell, if that's permitted through you, Mr Chair, is, in terms of, I'm happy to provide this committee with all, any information it requests around applications and RAA, but just to be clear, you want, what, do you want the full suite? Because the RAA delivers dozens of different programmes to farmers. You want the everything? Because, okay, right.
That's my request, thank you.
Has broken that by month, so we can sort of see.
Yes, that's exactly right.
You can see the, see the trend, but for the benefit of Hanson, the member nodded.
I apologize.
That brings us to Mr Benaziac.
Thank you, Chair. Just shifting focus, the R license extensions. We're made aware from our licence holders that the extensions were waiting your ministerial sign-off. Can you give us an update as to where we are with granting those extensions to the?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr Benaziac, good question. This, so it's, as per the government announcement, it was my intention to give all of those R licence holders a one-month extension to their existing licences, noting the fact that they were essentially prevented from engaging in their R licence activity for a period of exactly one month. And I'm, I think that documentation will be coming to me and across my desk very soon to, to make that instrument so that, and then government will announce that in due course. So very soon, Mr Benaziac, I think, Mr Hanson, is that? Sorry, yes. So I have to sign an instrument that requires regulation and then hopefully the legislative council won't disallow that and it'll be fine.
We certainly won't. Can you confirm whether this will actually include licences that are not only due for renewal this year, but people that hold multi-year licences? So people might apply for a two, three, five year. Will that be, will that month be tacked, tacked on to the two, three and five year licences as well?
That's correct. So it's not just to cover people that had to renew their licences during that one-month period, but anyone who currently held a licence at that time, they would simply have another month added to the end of that licence. No matter whether it was a, whatever duration, they still had to go. Yeah, and I think that's just easy from an administrative perspective. Otherwise, it gets too confusing and complicated and, yeah.
During the pandemic, the Game Licensing Unit implemented online testing for the R licence accreditation. Is it the intention that that will continue past this COVID-19 pandemic, that they will still allow for online testing?
Mr Hanson?
Yeah, so that's certainly been serving us well during the pandemic. We're happy to sort of continue the dialogue with one of the actual committees that were established during this to help guide our decisions on this has been a Hunting and Recreational Fishing Subcommittee. And we're happy to continue to take their views and thoughts on the continuation of the online testing.
Would you be able to provide some details on that Hunting and Recreational Fishing Committee and who, who was on it? Obviously on, I guess on notice?
Yep, yep.
And possibly on notice, what's been the, I guess, the testing application rate during the lockdown period compared to pre-lockdown? And whether you see any trend in more people jumping on that online testing?
Yeah, and so I'd have to take that on notice. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
When the state forests were closed to hunting, it was listed as due to concerns around travelling to regions. Was there any consideration given to modifying the booking system that would still allow local R licence holders to those forests being able to access them?
So I guess the, this is a, this is a really interesting area because it, I guess it highlights that sometimes in a pandemic, with all goodwill, certain decisions are made that, that have other, other consequences. So technically, my understanding, although I'm not the Minister for Forestry who looks after state forests, but my understanding was that state forests were technically never closed, but there was a restriction on the hunting activity by virtue of the travel restrictions contained within the public health orders. So if, for example, if I lived next door to a state forest, which I used to do, I could actually still go for, you know, according to all other provisions, I could still utilise that. state forest if I had a lawful reason to be there. But the advice that we received from the New South Wales Police, was it due to the travel restrictions, that the hunting in the state forests should cease, and hence the Department of Prime Industries and the Game Licensing Unit did what it did. And then obviously, when that changed, we were able to open it back up again. So, yeah, it, were there some?
It was an all-in, all-in or all-out?
Yeah, in a way. I mean, and in this, because, I mean, you've probably heard this from a number of ministers, that while my portfolio was impacted in this particular case, we're not the ones actually making those decisions, or even interpreting the public health orders, that's done by the New South Wales Police. And once they make a certain interpretation, then we all have to fall in line and make sure we administratively do the backend work, which in this case was the Game Licensing Unit making that determination. I think a lot of lessons have been learnt from this pandemic, and that's probably one example of where actually the travel restrictions probably meant that you could have, a bit like recreational fishing, still undertaken that activity because the physical state forest wasn't closed, but it was restricted because of travel. But if you were very close in proximity to the state forest, could you still have undertaken that activity? Well, again, we have to adhere to the interpretation of the New South Wales Police, and we did. And I guess, in this case, I would rather be erring on the side of caution than the other way around. And in the end, it was a month, and hence, because of that, I made that decision that we'd tack another month on the end of the licenses, just to try and do the right thing.
Sorry, Minister, did you say you asked for an interpretation of the law from the police? Is that what happened?
Not the law, but the public health orders in terms of the travel restrictions. And Mr. Hanson might be able to detail that, because he dealt, or his officials dealt with CECON.
They are the law, they have the effect of law. Is that what happened? Maybe, Mr. Hanson, you can explain what happened.
I think maybe because the health, not to put words in your mouth, but the health restrictions around travel were fairly vague.
That's correct.
And I think when you say you're seeking interpretation from the police, are you saying that the police were determining what would be deemed reasonable?
Correct. So.
Central Coast wrong, Queen Bee and OK, for example.
So it wasn't a case, Mr. Chair?
So I was wondering where the, I was wondering where the advice came from. Sorry, and you were going to ask Mr. Hanson.
So, we consulted with New South Wales Police with regards to how best to interpret the restrictions as per the public health orders, how they would be viewing and how they would be assessing non-essential with how it was interpreted for hunting purposes. We had a discussion about the fact that at that point in time, there had just been a closure of the booking system for campsites in a number of public land areas. And so the extension of the view of, for the same purpose of reducing the risk of inter-region transport or movement of people, given the fact that the vast majority of R license holders don't live locally to a state forest, the closure of the booking system for state forests for hunters, while still allowing those hunters who lived local to private land that they had access to hunting for, would still allow them the opportunity to hunt without increasing the risk of people travelling from Sydney, over the Great Divide, stopping at petrol stations, grocery stores and so forth, and the potential spread that that might create.
Could you table the advice you got from, or provide a copy of the advice you got from police in that regard?
I'd have to take that on notice, given the fact that at that stage, a large amount of our conversations with police were via the phone, in terms of discussion around how they were going to interpret, what sounded sensible, what sounded practical, and what would they support.
If you could just give details of those, if it's in writing, that would be great, but otherwise, details on notice, including when those conversations are happening, Mr. Hanson.
Not a problem.
No, you're all right. Just shifting focus, you've already given some commentary around sale yards. So is it your assertion that there was no actual health order restrictions placed on the activities of sale yards by the government?
Yes. So I'm glad you raised this subject, one of my favourites at the moment. Yeah, so I guess in response to, and one of the early, one of the very first issues that came out of a number of those 10 industry working groups, was that contained within the first iteration of the public health orders was, again, a rather, would use your words, vague, open to interpretation, restriction around public gatherings and auction houses and such like. And of course, their concern was, well, we need some clarity, because without, if you shut down livestock sales, how's the food supply chain going to work? Where are abattoirs going to get their stock from? Woolies, coals, all the chains? So I asked the Department of Prime Industries, which they did, and we worked through the Ministry of Health, and basically got the public health orders amended very quickly to ensure that the public gathering restrictions weren't in place for sale yards, which meant that for livestock sales and fibre auctions, like wool sales, that whilst physical distancing was in place, and I, probably nowadays, I don't think we view that as a restriction, that's just, that's just part of what we do now. Aside from that, there was no restriction on the gathering at a sale. Now, at the same time that was happening, a number of people in that industry were developing protocols, which were sent to Minister Littleproud, the Federal Agriculture Minister, which has been signed off on. And a number of sale yards operators have imposed their own restrictions and requirement vis-à-vis registering, registering before you go, temperature checking, not allowing sellers to actually be at the sale, only buyers, not allowing members of the public in. And I've been quite clear in my commentary that that's their prerogative to do that if they want, if they own and operate those sale yards, albeit they have to comply with national competition law, which is a Commonwealth area. But the government in New South Wales was not imposing any of those restrictions on sale yards. They were being imposed by the owners or operators of those yards. And now, yeah, now a lot of the yards are realising that and opening back up again, which is good.
What about the yards run by local councils? I'm aware that some of those local councils were imposing those same restrictions. And also, we've had complaints that restock, farmers that were looking to restock were regarded as non-genuine buyers and weren't allowed, weren't allowed to attend. And then, you know, then you have stocking agents trying to contend with, trying to buy for 20, 30, 40.
That's right.
Farmers, you know, you can see that's not going to work.
Absolutely, it's not. And, well, it's not ideal. And those complaints that were made to you, probably the same people or other people certainly made those complaints direct to me or through my office. And that's why, one, I issued a media release, did a lot of campaign, or media around it to try and spread the word that actually those requirements are not imposed by any New South Wales Public Health Order or restriction, and that it's up to those sale yards operators to exercise a degree of common sense. But also, and I'm no legal authority, there are some sitting around this table, it could be construed as some form of potential market manipulation and breach of some form of national competition law.
Well, that was the concern expressed, that, you know, only allowing large buyers like Woolworths, Coles, and JBS would essentially, and not allowing the restockers, would essentially allow for that price manipulation. Have you received any reports or complaints? I imagine most of it would go federally, but have you received any reports or complaints about price manipulation happening?
I've certainly received a lot of concerns from farmers that are worried that that could potentially be happening. And indeed, today, later today, I'll be writing a couple of items of correspondence to some organisations across the state that operate sale yards, that represent sale yards agents, asking them in strong terms to carefully consider the various parts, bits of Commonwealth legislation, to make sure that they don't find themselves wanting in that regard. Because it is a concern, both, I mean, it's a concern, going back to Mr. Searle's point about a difficult time and economic stimulus. If mum and dad operators, if I can use that colloquial term, are locked out of their local sale yards, then it becomes just the domain of the big guys.
And given that, we've spoken about, we've had some decent rain.
Yep.
And a perfect opportunity for some of these farmers to restock.
Restock, yeah.
And put them out in good paddocks.
Did you send a circular around, Minister? I mean, do you have, do you have a sort of like a contact list for the sale yards? And have you sent a circular around?
That's right, yes, I have. Yes, I've notified all those various groups and operators that basically you, the restrictions that they are imposing whilst well-meaning, and just to make it clear, it's a decision for them, but they're not, they're not the restrictions that are imposed by the New South Wales Public Health Orders. So virtually, just to clarify to each of them, what the public health orders provide for and what they don't, and allowing them to make their own decisions.
Can you provide us with a copy of that?
Sure.
On notice and tell us when it went out?
Sure.
Just on, a bit on commercial fishing, how many commercial fishermen have accessed the fee waivers that you've got on the DPI website? I think there's over a million dollars, but how many, what does that equate to in terms of the number of commercial fishermen?
Yeah, I don't have that number in front of me, Mr. Benaziac.
That applied to all commercial fishers? So we automatically applied? They didn't need to apply? That just?
Yeah, that was a broad waiver, but I don't have the exact, we can get you the exact number, but it applied to, yeah, every single one of them. I just don't have that exact number in front of me.
Okay. Has the review into the commercial fishing regulations been delayed by COVID-19? Has that impacted your consultation?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Hanson.
No, not that I'm aware of. I think we've had just under, well, over 150 submissions from commercial fishers across the state in response to the discussion paper that's out there, as well as a number of submissions from organisations and groups of fishers making comment back in. So, again, there might be some slight delay, just purely because of the fact that they've asked for extra time to get their meetings together, but it's not going to significantly change the timeframe that we have for the review.
Are you concerned that 150 out of 1,000 commercial fishermen, you might need to extend the timeframe, given that that's a very small percentage?
Actually, I mean, when you then look at some of the additional ones that are from organisations that have made submissions in, on behalf of their members, I think, a combination of organisations and individuals, I think there's a fair representation across the board in that number of submissions.
Has there been any estimates into how this has impacted the commercial fishing industry, with restaurant trading sort of ceasing, and noting Ms. Huesos's examples of, you know, oyster, you know, oyster farmers providing a lot of their produce to restaurants? Has there been any sort of figures floated about in terms of how this has impacted that industry?
There have been some estimates. We can provide that to you on notice. And it's not just the oyster industry, the abalone industry is also one that stands out in particular. And, yeah, as I said, we're considering some detailed assistance measures for that sector, and hopefully we'll be announcing that very soon.
So, if I may, Minister, so we have done some work with the seafood industry, just with regards to financial impacts. And these are obviously just sort of anecdotal reports back in from them. But it looks as though, obviously, particularly the hospitality and food service areas have been really vital markets in the past for the seafood industry, and where they felt the majority of the pain. Oysters, urchins, abalone and lobster obviously hit hardest, both with that downturn in restaurant trade, as well as the restriction in exports and the amount of air freight availability to them. Oyster industry have indicated sales have been down, in some cases up to 85 to 90%. Prawn farmers on the North Coast have had issues with movement of staff from Queensland to run hatcheries up there. That cross-border movement of staff has been an issue for them. Co-ops are reporting in excess of 30% decline in their customer throughput. And total business revenue for a number of the industry groups, they're saying their members are telling them it's between 30 and 40%, with some as high as 65% as a result of the impacts on downturn in some of their key market segments.
Well, Minister, those figures on the oyster industry, I mean, that is a really distressing kind of figure to hear. You said you're about to make a statement, some kind of announcement in terms of funding. It would seem that that can't wait. What's your timeframe?
Very soon, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you know, if you've got an industry like that, that I think all of us highly value, can you give an indication of, is it going to be a financial package? Because, you know, a collapse in demand of 85 to 90% in the oyster industry must just be devastating the sector. And I don't think they can wait.
Well, as I said, very soon. That's all I can say, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Mark.
You're all right. Was there any work done during COVID-19 to investigate what would happen if we had to close Sydney Fish Market or close co-ops, if they had a positive case or a scare?
There was certainly done, work done in concert with them and with New South Wales Health about how to manage the detection, positive detection onsite, what process and what systems they would need to put in place, a bit like a detection in any other major gathering of people.
But I'm more, I'm more thinking about what would happen if they had to shut down for 48 hours, seafood still on the road being trucked there, or seafood still being, you know, needs to go to co-ops for sale. If they're closed, they can't sell that seafood that gets thrown in the bin, essentially, and lost revenue.
And this was more about, what contingencies can they put in place for handling stock on hand and stock in route, to make sure that that wasn't at risk for them?
Would you be able?
You can finish this line off.
With on notice, would you be able to provide some details as to what those contingencies were?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm happy to give some more time.
No, no.
Had you finished, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, you go.
We'll go back to the opposition.
Well, can I ask, Mr. Hanson or Minister, have you got any additional information? Like, was it alternating labour force arrangements? Like, what was in place to make things? Because it's not just fish markets, it's obviously processing farms and processing.
Meat processors, intensive livestock industries, yeah.
Yeah.
And so what we did was, we worked with New South Wales Health, and in some cases, we plagiarised what had been done in other jurisdictions or in other locations to be able to take the work that had been done there. But basically produced a series of guidelines that can be used by facilities. Those guidelines were then tailored by each facility to suit their particular operation, their scale, their size, their. So we can make available both those standard guidelines that were produced, that, you know, started first and foremost at how do you, how do these facilities, first of all, protect the human health of the workers and the customers, then moved on to how they protect any animal welfare issues, or address any animal welfare issues, then moved down to product security, and then moved down to minimising economic losses.
Okay. I just wanted to come back to the issue of, we were talking about the Rural Assistance Authority. If you can provide those numbers by program and month, so we can just see over time how they've.
Over the last 12 months?
Yes, that would be useful. Thank you. I wanted to come back, just to ask a few more questions, though, on this specific issue about waiving and deferring the payments. So is it still the case that people have to pay the deferred money back at the end of the waiver period?
Yes, that's my understanding. That is, that's still the case, yes.
Okay, so it's not then put on to the end of the loan, or the loan period isn't extended like it normally would be? It's that right at the end of that deferral period, you have to then pay that amount?
Yeah, there would be a payment plan entered into, yes, yeah.
No, is there a payment plan that's entered into, or is it the entire amount is deferred to the end of the deferral period?
Well, it depends how long the deferral period would be for.
There's, perhaps, Mr. Hanson, you can provide us with some specifics on this?
Yes. So I've just got, so we communicated directly via, so this is getting back to the class of category of commercial fishers. So we did go out, as I said, to all of our commercial fishing loan customers with text message and email message on 22nd of April to advise that they could request deferrals, and if they wanted to, to contact the RIAA. I'm advised that 19 of the 58 RIAA fisheries customers have utilised deferral arrangements since March 2020.
Okay. And then, are you able to tell me whether that's still the arrangement that's in place? The amount is just deferred, and then it's payable at the end of the deferral period? Or is it then put on to the end of the loan, or is the loan repayments extended over a period? What's the arrangement?
So, I don't have the individual details, because it will vary by individual customer in terms of what they have sought in terms of those deferrals. But we're able, probably not by customer, but. not by customer, but to give you the types of arrangements that they've sought for, we can give you that on notice.
Minister, I mean, given we're going to see potentially a whole lot of economic pain come at once if the federal government continues down the path of lifting the job seeker payments, well, reducing the job seeker payments, removing many of the job, no, and removing many, well, both, both are on the table, reducing the, the amount of job seeker, lifting the, removing much of the coverage of Jobkeeper. If, if those, if those economic impacts hit us in September or October, do you see how having a deferral rather than a forgiveness arrangement for fees, if they, if those deferrals hit at the same time, we're likely to see this, you know, avalanche of economic hits? Are there considerations given that to instead of having a deferral, have a waiver of these fees?
Given that not many commercial fishermen would even actually apply for Jobkeeper?
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't qualify.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, clearly it's going to, we're coming into potentially this, you know, this, I described it as an avalanche, there's probably a better description of it, but these series of things hitting at once. And if the deferred, if the deferrals hit at the same time.
Okay.
There's other people obviously concerned about this as well. If the deferrals hit at the same time, do you, that, that, that might, you know, could aggravate.
Yep.
So are there, are there plans afoot to waive instead of defer?
Yeah. So to both issues, I see where you're both going and you, and you're right to do so because I guess the Rural Assistance Authority, operating under the Rural Assistance Authority Act, does ultimately have a lot of discretion, although it, it, it obviously has to adhere to the same fiduciary responsibilities and laws that every other institution like CommBank, Westpac or whatever. But it does have flexibility to do that. And in the past, in the past, it's always been the policy to assess these things on a case by case basis rather than a blanket approach. And given that in this particular category that's being asked about, it is a particularly small group of people, I think we can probably get a, a pretty good feel. I don't know whether there's much diversity in that group or whether they're, a lot of them are in similar situations, that'd have to be assessed. But I can assure the committee that yes, the, the act does allow the authority a lot of discretion in this regard. And I would be, as Minister, encouraging the authority to use that discretion, obviously in the context of the current and future, as you correctly identify, economic climate. Because yeah, it's, I think, quite apparent that if they, Commonwealth stick to their current, you know, announced timeframe, that we could be heading off a rather steep economic cliff in a few months' time.
So, so does that mean you will make representations to the authority encouraging them to consider waivers rather than deferrals?
So I've, I meet with the Director of the Authority indeed, I was in Orange just last week, talking with the Director and a number of the staff about a number of things. But yes, I, I guess it's not as blunt as that, but it's, it's about encouraging them to exercise the discretion relative to the current conditions. We want to keep people in business, we want to keep people working, keep people in jobs, and in that context, they'll make those decisions, Mr Hanson.
Yeah. So I was just going to say, I mean, the staff, the authority are very receptive to discussions about how to implement a deferral to best suit the business needs. Now, th- these are 10-year loans. And so, you know, repayment of any deferred amounts in later years is going to be significantly out from the year that we're in at the moment in terms of their scheduling, or they might want to do it earlier. It's, so that's kind of discussion and flexibility that they have. They don't have the ability at the moment to actually make decisions about waiving, because that's actually a cost that they don't have the, the capacity to make those calls themselves, but they can work with the loan holders on the scheduling and the deferral of those payments over that 10-year forward period, which hopefully puts us out into periods in which there are burn times and probably more bust times and then more burn times again over that decade.
All right. Well, my last question before I hand it back is, if, if, if there isn't the capacity to waive, is government considering any necessary legislative measures that might be required to provide that capacity for the reasons we've discussed?
And I'd be happy to consider those measures if, if, if the, if the need arose to do that. And I think, as you've heard from Mr Hanson, the authority will work with the individual loan holders. But if there are those issues that arise, I'm happy to consider that if that is required.
But I just wanted to be really clear that there is flexibility within the arrangements that can be made by the individual with, with the RIA and whether that means deferring it, if, if they choose to defer the amount to the end of the, the deferral period, or if they choose to put that later on in the loan, that's, that can be the case.
Yeah.
There is the flexibility. I just want to be really clear about that.
Yeah. So we, we have the flexibility to work with them on how that deferral occurs. We haven't as yet extended any of the terms because of the 10-year length of time. But we do have, as I said, 19 of the 58 fisheries customers have used the deferral arrangements since March this year.
Okay. And there won't be penalties on them for seeking those deferrals?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to come back to the question of particularly around whether it's the Sydney Fish Markets or processing plants or whatever it might be. And you talked, or perhaps it was the Minister who talked about learning from other jurisdictions about what they were doing. Minister, have you advocated for asymptomatic testing of workers particularly in these high, highly valuable industries, these essential industries as, as we've seen in other states?
Asymptomatic testing?
Yes, that's right.
Those people, anyone is able to be tested at the moment, whether showing symptoms or not showing symptoms?
But you haven't advocated for earlier on, during the peak of the pandemic, for workers to be tested in a more systematic way, as we've seen in other states?
Well, that again, it contains an assertion on your part.
No, I, I mean.
I think, I think the Minister can, can deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, all, all of the, I guess, all the advice that the, this portfolio through the Department of Prime Minister's advice provided to all of industry is, is based on the public, the, the best health advice that's provided by the Chief Medical Officer and the public health orders. And we're guided with the advice that we provide to industry by the advice that we receive from the appropriate authorities. And that's the nature of the advice that we, we have provided on every occasion.
So, so the guidelines that we have sent out to the industries do recommend that staff checks in terms of their health status should be done on a daily basis. Now, that, that's, that's then interpreted by individual businesses as to what they want to do. So as you'd be aware with a lot of hospitals now, temperature checks upon entry and so forth, somewhere to declaration that a staff member needs to sign each day with regards to entry. I'm, I'm not aware of any business that has gone to random COVID testing of, or collecting of samples for testing from workers that aren't showing any symptoms. But that interpretation of doing a daily check of each staff member's health status is being interpreted differently by different businesses in terms of setting up their requirements to minimise the risk to them and their workforce.
Yeah. And obviously we've seen temperature checks here at Parliament and they're being done in a range of different avenues. Minister, you're aware that in Victoria, they're testing asymptomatic workers?
In some cases, yeah, they are.
And they were doing that in a meatworks that uncovered a cluster down there? That was, that was part of their much more proactive testing regime?
That, that was in response to identification. Don't, don't, don't conflate the whole period with what they've had. But that's not what's happened down there.
Victoria is doing a much more aggressive asymptomatic testing regime than has been undertaken in New South Wales. And that is also within their, their essential industries which, which has been identified. Are you aware of that, Minister?
What, what's the, what's the point? What's your question?
I think, Minister, the question is, is New South Wales going to be doing more aggressive asymptomatic testing in the industry to match what's happening in Victoria and accepting that there haven't been the outbreaks in New South Wales that we've seen in Victoria? But the asymptomatic testing may nevertheless be a very sensible precaution?
Well, I'm not aware of any plans that the government has, albeit I'm not the Health Minister, to mandate asymptomatic testing.
I think it's be allowed to be.
In any, I'm not aware of any plans the government has to mandate asymptomatic testing on a daily or regular basis in, in any facility, whether it's an abattoir, an egg packing facility or, or indeed Parliament. I don't know.
I'm not asking you about mandating it. I'm asking whether you, as the Minister, ever advocated or sought, you, you said you were on a weekly hookup with other ministers. You were looking to learn from those experiences. Did you ever advocate for it? Are you ever going to advocate for it?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I take the advice of the Chief Medical Officer, as I believe the government and the Parliament do, and I'm very comfortable with that.
And, and that's your understanding at the moment? The, the advice of the Chief Medical Officer is, isn't to have widespread asymptomatic testing?
No, we haven't, we haven't received any of that advice.
I understand.
Minister, what actions is your government taking to assist primary producers in relation to ensuring they have sufficient supply of skilled and seasonal workers such as shearers and pickers due to travel restrictions caused by the pandemic?
Really good question. Well, first of all, we didn't impose as a government any restrictions on our borders.
I understand that.
Which, which has been a huge assistance to the availability of seasonal workers within the state. The, as part of those weekly hookups with ag ministers across the state, we discussed as a group of ag ministers with Minister Littleproud about developing an accord or an arrangement across Australia that we could work out how we would deal with seasonal workers. Obviously, when the Prime Minister announced virtually that people, we weren't accepting people from overseas into our country and there'd be restrictions on people that were currently in the country getting out, the Commonwealth had to make a decision about, about 140,000 visa holders, Pacific Islander visa holders, 457 visa holders that were currently stuck in Australia, couldn't get home and whose visas were about to expire. The Commonwealth made a decision to extend those visas by six months, which is very wise. And then all the states got together to work out an accord or an agreement about how we would monitor or regulate the travel of those seasonal workers. Obviously, I asked the Department of Prime Minister to consult with the Ministry of Health, the Chief Medical Officer, and we put forward a proposal which was accepted that essentially there would be no travel restrictions at all within New South Wales for seasonal workers. They could come into the state, they could travel within the state from property to property or workplace to workplace. The only proviso was, and this was based on the health advice, is that if a, if a visa holder was coming from a metropolitan area, a capital city into a region, then they had to either do 14 days in isolation in their point of origin before moving out to the regions, or undertake, present themselves for a COVID-19 test and demonstrate they had a negative test. The Commonwealth agreed with that. They incorporated that, I believe, into some of the visa conditions. So we thought, we didn't see a need to, as a government, issue a specific public health order around seasonal workers, because if they were found in breach, their visa would be cancelled and they'd be shipped off home straight away anyway. So industry was very happy with that. Indeed, industry, through the working groups, were very keen to ensure that there wasn't any requirement for them to fill out lots of paperwork, find accommodation for seasonal workers, et cetera. And so that, that in the end was a position that was adopted by most of the states and agreed to by the Commonwealth. And so far, so good. It's provided at this stage, it seems sufficient workforce. Indeed, the states that have had trouble with their workforce have been those that have insisted on hard borders, particularly South Australia and Western Australia, because it didn't provide for any additional seasonal workers to travel within Australia into those jurisdictions. So by us keeping our borders open, we've actually had a lot of the seasonal workers that were turned away from Western Australia and South Australia stay in New South Wales and, and get employed here.
So you, you're not hearing any reports of the industries in New South Wales having any difficulty attracting sufficient workers?
Look, there is always, outside of COVID, there is always the challenge, particularly in the agricultural sector of getting skilled 457 visa holders. Indeed, it's been a longstanding issue that the National Farmers Federation have taken up with the Commonwealth about visa holders and visa conditions and the desire to have a specific agricultural base visa. A lot of agricultural production struggles to find skilled workers, to plant operators, mechanics, things like that, just because the, the pay in the agricultural sector for those skills is not comparable with the pay scale in other industries that also require those skills. So that's been an issue. Has it been amplified by COVID? No, not in, not, not on the information I've seen, but nevertheless, it's still an ongoing issue. But at least the seasonal worker issue, which potentially could have been disastrous, has been resolved and, and those industries have access to those employees.
So the problems with seasonal workers are no worse than usual?
No, no, no. There, there hasn't been anything in COVID that I'm aware of. Or Mr Hanson, you might want to comment. Just because we're able to come to an agreement with the states and the Commonwealth about how we would deal with those particular visa class holders. And I think by and large, it's worked pretty well.
Just before Mr Hanson commences his answer, could I just raise with you, I think you mentioned visa workers and particularly those coming from the Pacific. In recent days, there's been reports that workers from the Pacific who have been brought here by particularly labour hire companies have had a significant proportion of their income deducted for accommodation in sort of, in ways that can only be described, I think, as fairly scandalous.
I think just scandalous.
Yes.
More than that, yeah.
Well, I think there's no disagreement there.
Disgusting.
What, what measures are you as Minister thinking of taking to sort of combat that, let's face it, exploitation?
Well, I, the actual program highlighted an instance actually occurring in my own electorate. So as a local member, I've actually already written to my local federal member requesting him to approach his federal counterparts, basically to find out what's going on. Those, I understand from that, from that program. Do you know who my federal member is, Mr Khan? Friend of both of ours.
Mr Joyce, wouldn't he?
Yeah. Like Voldemort, he shall not be named.
Not by you anyway.
But essentially, my understanding is from the program.
Gives him too much credit.
That there is a, they're, they're here in Australia on a Commonwealth visa system and there is a federal government entity that's supposed to administer that scheme or essentially look after those people that come in through and, and then get tied up with labour hire companies. It's all from the surface a little bit confusing. And I must confess to not knowing the ins and outs of how this actually all works, considering it all happens at a Commonwealth level. But I have nevertheless written to seek clarification and obviously an investigation into the issues that that particular program raised. Because that is, in my view, absolutely disgusting and scandalous and does nothing for those individual people as humans, but our reputation as a country to continue to have those people from those countries come in. And, and literally, without those people coming in on those visas, a number of our industries, that particular abattoir in Inverell, would not exist without those visa holders. Because it's very difficult to find Australians for a number of reasons who will undertake that, those activities, that employment.
Yeah. Minister, just as, as a follow-up in relation to that, my understanding is that the, a lot of these visa holders are actually sponsored by their sort of, by the labour hire companies and bring them here. So obviously, their ability to complain about that kind of exploitation and other kinds of exploitation is pretty much undercut. What actions are you as Minister thinking of proposing to deal with that situation?
Well.
To your federal counterparts?
Well, first of, first of all, I'm trying to get some information to better understand how that all works. Because I must confess to not being as au fait as I would like to be about how it works, how, how the services of those particular employees are procured, what agreements they sign up to, the, the pay scale, and what protections they have under various pieces of legislation to make sure that they're not being exploited in the workplace. But also in this circumstance, they're being exploited with regard to their accommodation. You know, the home that they're renting, I don't know exactly where that is in Inverell, but I'd be very surprised if you couldn't rent that on the private market for about 400 bucks a week. And the amount that's being docked from their pay is scandalous. So first of all, trying to find out and understand how that system all works. And then obviously, you know, asking or requesting some form of formal inquiry or investigation from the appropriate Commonwealth authority as, as a start.
Minister, I mean, this isn't the first time it's been raised about this exploitation of foreign workers who are brought out on those visas. It's not just limited to seasonal work in the agriculture industry. We saw the exact same in relation to hospitality workers in the, in the Blue Mountains. In fact, in, in or about where Mr Seale resides. And we saw the exact same agreements being entered into with outrageously offensive charges for accommodation and upkeep, which, which took, you know, which, which took, you know, a very large proportion of what is otherwise quite low wages. If you're making inquiries, will you extend your ambit of inquiries? I, I know, I know you're, but more broadly, because it's a broader problem, which has a, you know, one aspect of it happens in your portfolio.
Yeah, look, the, yeah, and this is the first time this issue's come across my desk, just simply because it's the first occasion I'm aware of where it intersects with, with this portfolio. I would imagine if there was some form of Commonwealth inquiry, which I certainly think there needs to be now, that it would cover, it would have a pretty wide, a wide ambit. But, um, yeah, the, the, the program itself, um, mainly focused on, yeah, the, the docking of their pay for their accommodation, which, um, yeah, is something that, um, that I haven't had raised before. So, um, it is incredibly concerning.
Yeah, it is, it is not uncommon, and I'd give you as another example that the same exploitative arrangements out of the hospitality industry with a particularly notorious, um, operator in the, in the Blue Mountains and in fact in the Lower Hunter Valley.
My, my concern is if we allow this to become settled as, as the norm in, in perception, then that has huge consequences for the agricultural sector if the word goes back that don't come to Australia or don't come to a particular operator. Cause literally, uh, our agricultural sector would not function without, um, overseas workers, seasonal workers, it just.
It's one of the primary sources of, uh, of income for many
That's right.
South Pacific nations, so
That's right.
There's a two-way impact of this.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, but I mean.
Shouldn't be exploited. Shouldn't be exploited.
Yeah, I mean, we clearly have a fiduciary obligation. People are coming here for the reasons Mr Seale said, they are very vulnerable because their visa status depends upon their relationship with the labour hire company or the employer. And if it's a labour hire company or the employer who's making them enter into these exploitative accommodation arrangements, I, I would imagine this is an under-reported problem, Minister. Mr Benazak?
Just a few, just touching on the four, five, seven, uh, visas and the reliance of the agricultural department, agricultural industry on it, what's, what's doing to shift that in any way? What, what's the government doing to shift that and grow our own and provide incentives for people to go, and be, you know, into the regions and be employed by these meat processing, um, plants? As we know, a lot of meat processing plants do, you know, hire a lot of these four, five, seven visas. What are we doing to encourage, you know, a grow your own sort of mentality?
Well, it, it, it's a.
Good question.
Well, is it, is it just a foregone conclusion? Are we giving up on the issue or?
No, I, I don't think we've given up and I don't think anyone ever should give up on the issue, but it's incredibly hard. To give you two local examples, since we're on the theme of bindere beef at Inverell, they employ around seven hundred people and, uh, around half the workforce are visa holders. And, uh, you know, around a hundred Ks away at Gara with the tomato farm that employs over seven hundred people, uh, around a third of that workforce are visa holders. They don't get paid, my understanding, any less or more to work there, but it's just very hard to find locals that are willing to undertake that sort of work. How, more broadly, how do we encourage people into the agriculture sector? Well, we've got a raft of programs to do that, particularly young people. But in terms of encouraging people to take up particular jobs within the food supply chain, that, that's a tough thing. I, you know, it won't surprise the committee or any MP that from time to time you do get people come through your door that are unfortunately unemployed, and I've had more and more of that lately due to COVID. And when you sit down and talk to those people, they want a job, but more often than not, I, I get the feedback that we want a job, but we don't want that particular job. Like, I want a job, but I'm not willing to go and pick tomatoes at Gara or I'm not gonna go and get trained to become a boner on the boning room floor at an abattoir. Even though that company will say, you come to us with no skills, no experience, we will pay for you to be trained, we will buy all of your equipment, all of your uniform, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to spend a dollar. We will train you up and make you ready for the boning room floor. And yet still, it's very, very difficult, uh, for those sort of companies to find people. I don't, if I sit here, I don't have a solution to that, but gee, if you've got one or anyone's got one, I'd be really keen to listen, because it's been a tough nut to crack for decades, uh, in the bush. Mr Hanson?
So, so if I might just add to that, I mean, the one thing that the agricultural industries have been doing however, which has been their long-term strategy to address this, because this is not a new phenomenon for them, has actually been automation and the investment in technology to actually reduce the amount of the type of human labour jobs required in the facilities. So a number of meat processing plants, for, for example, have gone to robotic boning. That means that the jobs that are required in that plant are actually jobs, electricians, computer engineers to be able to set up the programs, to set up the equipment, to be able to, it completely changes the nature of the, the workforce on site to being tech-focused roles, helping to create, maintain and constantly adjust the technology on site. And I think we're seeing that more and more, I mean, those of you on social media would see how many of our farming community over these last couple of months have been social isolating in tractor cabs as they've been sowing, are using, um, guidance equipment which allows them to do the long hours that they're doing in their cabs. Because it's basically doing the driving, doing the, modifying the application rate of their seed or the fertilizer. Now, that changes the types of assistance those farmers need to repair their equipment, to maintain their equipment. You know, it's far more than a toolbox these days to sort of maintain equipment that has got sophisticated computer technology, you know?
But, but the increased automation, um, in say the, those large glass house tomato facilities and the increased kind of industrialization of, of the, the way tomatoes are produced, actually means a lot of the jobs now are extraordinarily repetitive under very tight timeframes, which many local people find hard to, to find value in that kind of work, because it, it's effectively you're a machine in a tomato factory.
Human machine.
And, and, you know, so it, it's not just a question of
No.
the views of the local, local people, it's actually the nature of the work is you're a human machine in a tomato factory.
No, and, yeah, yeah, and there's not much, getting away from that, and the perverse thing is the drive to more automation can have the other effect where you actually see a reduction in the amount of employment. The cotton industry is an absolute classic where everyone would go cotton chipping. Well, that doesn't happen anymore because now we've got, you know, we've got crops that don't require cotton chipping because, uh, um, because of genetic modification and other herbicides, you've got, uh, no more, you don't have bowl buggies and module makers in the cotton industry because now you go and spend one point two million dollars and you buy a picker that'll pick and bale cotton for you and you've just got someone who comes and picks up the bales, when before you had five people employed in a paddock, now you've got one person. Uh, and that's just happened in the last half a decade. And, um, yeah, it doesn't solve the issue of where you find those people to do the jobs that Mr Shubridge said. They're repetitive, it's like picking fruit, citrus or whatever around Batla or in the south of the state. Yeah, probably not a lot of fun, but nevertheless essential jobs. And it's just hard to find Australians that want to do that work.
Just one final question, given the amount of seafood we, uh, import from overseas, what additional measures have been put in place around biosecurity? Particularly importing those products from known virus hotspots or sources?
My, um, I'm, I'll ask Mr Hanson to address this in a moment, but I know the Commonwealth government has stepped up its funding for its, um, its quarantine inspection services at all, at all ports, entry points into Australia. And, um, there's a, a number of working groups that, um, we are part of as well as the other states to make sure that if there are issues, that there is a plan in place for how to deal with any detections at any of those ports or places like that. Mr Hanson, you, you might have some more information on what the Commonwealth's doing?
Yeah, so, and I just want to be clear, there's, a- any of the quarantine arrangements purely to address already existing known risks and concerns. Because there's no evidence to suggest that COVID is spread by food and therefore that the pandemic has a potential food path risk. And I think that's very important for consumers to, to make sure we continue to reiterate that. The, the spread that we're seeing, that we have seen and continue to see is human-to-human spread. So our quarantine arrangements in terms of importation of food remains as vigilant as always, both in terms of not just inspection at entry, but actually our work with the exporting government to set the food safety standards that they need to actually make sure that their exporters are complying with before they're actually allowed to export to Australia. The same way that our exporters have to meet, um, the incoming or the purchasing country's, um, food safety requirements. We set standards that, um, the federal government, it works with the exporting country government to make sure those standards are adhered to. And the partnership between the inspection, inspection by the exporting country as well as the inspection by the importing country, in this case, the Australian government, are the two key safety mechanisms that are in place.
Is there any quarantine or public health advice that there's a COVID nineteen risk from the transmission of foodstuffs?
No.
Is the advice that there isn't a risk?
So both the World Health Organization and the OIE, um, both point to the fact that, um, there's no advice at the moment that suggests that animals or animal products are a potential spread of the disease.
And I, I assume that extends to, um, plant-based products as well?
Yes, one would assume so, yes. Now again, good hygiene is required, the, the same way that, um, inanimate objects can be potential transmission pathways, that's why we wipe down door handles and lift buttons and so forth. So good, typical good, um, food handling hygiene procedures actually work in favor of reducing the potential risk of any spread. But those procedures are in place as much for protection of spread of any other virus, bacteria or disease.
What works for salmonella works for COVID nineteen?
That's correct.
All right. Sorry, Mike.
Just lastly, picking up on your opening statement, you talked about, you know, you're reflecting on, you know, there's a greater consciousness about food security and buying local. What's the government doing to capitalize on that red-eyed sentiment about buying local and maybe shifting the focus of our agriculture to be more domestically consumed rather than internationally exported?
So we're determined through, uh, our various strategies and efforts to partner with industry on a number of programs to get the word out to the Australian community, but in this case, just in New South Wales, to think about when you're at, uh, going to your local supermarket shelf to actually look on the labels, the country of origin labelling and see where the products are from or the constituent products that make up that product, where they're from, and think about, uh, supporting, uh, Australian produce or even better, New South Wales produce if you can. I think, um, in a way, um, for the first time in a long time, particularly in the early days of COVID with, when all the supermarket shelves were stripped all the time, okay, toilet paper initially, but that soon passed and then it became, you know, staples, meats, pastas, things like that. I think for the first time in a long time, people started to actually think about, gosh, if the shelves are empty, where do these things actually all come from? Where are they actually produced? Or maybe that's just me, I don't know, but, um, and so we are going to try post-COVID to capitalize on that goodwill or that, uh, focus or that memory that people will have of what it was like in the supermarket shelves and to remind people of how important food security is. But to maintain good food security, you've gotta, you've gotta support your, your local producers.
Finish, Mike? Which brings us to the final round of opposition questions.
Okay. Minister, what assistance is your government providing, uh, in terms of finding or funding alternate forms of accommodation for seasonal workers? Not only to avoid the exploitation of the kind we discussed in the previous round, but also they don't have to, so they don't share amenities with other workers as a kind of COVID nineteen response?
So the, the responsibility for the, the finding of accommodation for, um, seasonal workers still rests with the, uh, my understanding with the employer or, or in some instances for them to find their own accommodation. Now, now I say that because in most cases, where the seasonal workers are going are to areas that have had seasonal workers coming into those communities for decades. So it's well-established, um, some will be accommodated on farm or on property, some will be located in the local caravan park or in the local hotel. And all of those operators, um, would be aware of their obligations in terms of, um, distancing, in terms of shared facilities, uh, and, and to make sure that they have those cleaning arrangements in place. So, um, the government hasn't taken a role, Mr Seale, in actively seeking out accommodation, because in most of these communities, all of the accommodation already exists because they've had seasonal workers there for a long time and there haven't been any impediments so far to people gaining or accessing that, that accommodation either on farm or, or in that local community.
Sure, but we have seen exploitation of some of these workers, so, um, maybe there is a role for government to play in putting workers in the way of non-exploitative forms of accommodation perhaps?
Yes, so, so the, sorry, when, there's a difference, I guess, between, um, in the, yeah, some companies engage in the case of, obviously, uh, that example that was publicized through a Commonwealth labour hire firm or what have you. In most cases though, with seasonal workers, they're literally only in a particular location for a matter of weeks or months and then they move on to the next property or they move on to a different part of the state, uh, and so forth. They're not, um, uh, indentured, if you like, they're, they're, they simply move from place to place. If there's a bit of fruit to pick or a bit of work to do on that property, they'll do that and then they'll move on, hence the, the term seasonal worker. They're a little bit different again to, uh, those visa holders that, um, yeah, that specifically then sign an agreement to work in one particular location for an extended period of time, either for six months, twelve months or what have you, um, and then, and then return home and a new group come in. So, yeah, that's why in that case we haven't been involved. And indeed, with that scenario that was broadcast on TV, because they come in under a Commonwealth scheme and that, that all that other, uh, the way that they're employed and their conditions presumably is also controlled by the Commonwealth, we, we haven't had any involvement, uh, to this point.
But no doubt there are some things that can be learned from this experience to sort of try and do things better next season?
Absolutely, always happy to, to learn new things and, um, hopefully, when I get a reply from, uh, federal government in relation to that issue, we'll probably learn a little bit more, perhaps some things that, um, are quite unsavoury.
I'll just, sorry, if I could just add just quickly, we, we have provided, um, guidance for both seasonal workers and seasonal worker employers, um, to actually provide them and link them through to both what's required in the accommodation with regards to the public health orders. So how to meet the public health orders for seasonal worker accommodation. Plus, we've highlighted, if you're a seasonal worker that doesn't have accommodation as provided as part of your employment, we have highlighted some sites that they can go to to help them find accommodation within regions.
But we don't procure the accommodation?
No, we, we simply act as a guidepost to where they might go to be able to independently find their own accommodation, which wouldn't have addressed the, um, recent case that's been identified, just given the fact that that was a labour hire company who was establishing that for them, so.
Did you refer at all to fair trading, Minister? Because fair trading may actually have some oversight if there are deeply unfair or inappropriate, um, arrangements in place in respect of a lease.
Did, did I refer what, sorry?
Did you refer, you, you, I know that you wrote to the, a certain federal member, um, about, about.
Oh, sorry, well, no, I haven't, no, I haven't.
Do, do you think that might be useful to also refer the issue to fair trading?
I think I might, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Excellent.
I'm sure you will as well.
Well, if, if you're going to, Minister, I will leave it with a ministerial referral, which I think would be useful.
I will, I will contact my colleague today, Mr Anderson.
Just in relation to
That'll fix it.
these, you know, matters of exploitation, vulnerability, particularly the courage shown by the, the particular worker to speak out. Is your government considering, or are you as minister considering any, uh, mechanisms by which you might, uh, help people who come forward with these sorts of tales of being exploited when they come here as workers, particularly in the industries that you are the steward of?
Yeah, it's, it's probably too early to say, Mr Seale, to be, uh, ultra-specific. As I said, um, the, um, you know, the broadcast aired very recently and still trying to get, still trying to ascertain some information from the Commonwealth about how this all actually works and what has gone wrong here or where are the gaps, uh, that these, uh, these people have fallen through to be exploited in this way. And it may very well be that, as, as the Chair highlighted, that it might involve, uh, if there is to be some involvement. is to be some involvement, either to make the Commonwealth government administer that programme a lot fairer in a way that doesn't see people exploited in that way, or if there is a gap that can be plugged by the state government, finding out where that gap is and how we can plug it. But I can't say what the government will or won't do just because we're still trying to get, well, I'm still trying to get some information from the Commonwealth about how this all works and how a situation like this can possibly eventuate and what they're going to do to make sure it won't happen again or to anyone else in any other sector.
Because I think as the Chair pointed out earlier, although this is not an unusual occurrence in terms of other industries in New South Wales, so no doubt there's a continuing problem. Minister, can you outline what risk mitigation measures are being put in place by your government or recommended by your government to ensure that seasonal workers are safe from exposure to COVID-19 or at least their risks of exposure are assessed and addressed?
Yeah, certainly. Mr Hanson can talk to the specifics, but we have provided guidance notes to all industry stakeholders, both representative groups and direct to individual employers that engage seasonal workers, to make them aware of the existing public health order requirements in relation to social distancing, testing, shared facilities, cleaning of those facilities. And we've also worked with the Commonwealth to communicate those, I guess, details to those seasonal workers so that they're aware, first of all, of their obligation to obtain a test that shows that they are negative before venturing out into regional areas or indeed, in lieu of that, to self-isolate in their place of origin for 14 days. I haven't heard any or received any reports from industry or any other stakeholders to indicate that hasn't been happening. And as I said, I haven't heard of any issues and we certainly haven't seen any cases. Also, we checked to make sure, and that was part of the consultation with the Ministry for Health and the Chief Medical Officer, to make sure that throughout rural and regional New South Wales, all of our public hospitals were equipped with enough facilities so that we could adequately test people if there were issues and then make sure we had all the facilities in place to, if there was an outbreak, that we could cater for those people, i.e. isolate them. And of course, the advice coming back from the Ministry of Health, the Chief Medical Officer, was that those measures were in place. So we were comfortable in providing all of that, all of that advice to all the employees and seasonal workers. Mr Hanson, did I miss anything there?
I'll just administer the fact that we've made sure that we've provided to both the employers and made available to employees guidelines that complement the work that's been done by the NFF in terms of a workbook that they're produced for employers and employees and seasonal workers, as well as the WorkSafe guidelines that have been produced as well. So in large part, we've been acting as a concierge to point people to where information sits, where it's available and make sure employers and employees know their rights and their responsibilities.
Okay. Minister, last year the government announced essentially the re-establishment of the post of Agent General in London and other senior trade commissioners for locations such as Mumbai, New York, Shanghai and Singapore. Have those posts been filled by your
Point of border, point of border.
I don't know, okay.
I'm going to take the point at this stage.
I predict the point.
Yeah.
And I will ask, I will ask the member, how does this relate to the terms of preference of this inquiry, which is about COVID-19? Because on the face of it, it doesn't appear to...
Okay, well, the question was based on, given the pressure that all the economy is put under by COVID-19, obviously the idea of these posts, as I understood it, was to enhance New South Wales' trade opportunities at this time, but if you're on a rural border, that's fine.
Well, I think we can go down this very short path, but I think it's a tangential relevance, but given it's tangential, I think we'll allow some short questions about it.
I'll ask the one question about whether the posts have been filled.
I don't know.
Okay. Are you the Minister responsible for those?
No, I'm not.
Okay, that's fine, that's good. Minister, what impact has your agency been monitoring in relation to the impact of COVID-19 on the wool industry? And what has been the impact of COVID on the wool industry, if any?
I'm not aware of any significant impacts on the wool industry, Mr Searle, and I'm not, Mr Hanson, has anything specific to the wool industry come through the industry working group? I think while Mr Hanson's searching there, the only issue that was brought to my attention very early in the piece was the concern that in the public health orders, whilst livestock auctions were able to continue, as we talked about with Mr Benaziac, that actually fibre auctions or wool auctions, which happen in a similar way to the auctioning of livestock, but the wool is actually put on display and people physically come in and look at it and buyers come in and buy it, was actually, and it wasn't, I'm sure it wasn't the intention, was actually excluded, which meant that they were not able to continue to go ahead. We quickly got the Health Minister's agreement to amend the health orders to cover them with the same exemption that was granted to livestock auctions so that wool auctions could continue as per normal with distancing measures in place. But I'm not aware of any other specific issues in the wool industry, Mr Hanson?
So there's been obviously a short-term disruption in the fact that China and Chinese processing mills are a large part of the supply chain in terms of production of wool and garments around the globe using Australian wool, one of our largest customers. And so obviously logistics have been a key inhibitor in terms of sea freight, there's been a significant sort of change in sea freight activity. In addition to that, you know, wool traditionally has been a luxury item which requires strong GDP growth within a country for demand to continue. It's seen as a luxury purchase, as such, some of those key marketplaces, not just China, but markets, incredibly important markets in Europe such as Italy, have seen a significant downturn in purchasing of that type of luxury product, which has a flow-on effect in demand along the supply chain.
Well, that's really where my questions were going. You've got the slowdown or the closure of manufacturing, I think including using Australian wool in both Italy and China and other places as well. Has that lack of demand then flowed through and impacted on Australian wool producers? And if so, what is the, what is the nature of that impact? Can you quantify it?
I'm not sure if I can quantify it right here.
I'm happy to take it on notice. I assume if the wool production industry in New South Wales was hurting as a result of the cessation or slowdown of manufacture overseas, they would have reached out to you. Have you had representations from the industry around that?
Haven't as yet, Mr Searle, but we can take that on notice and try and get you some information to quantify.
There's probably a couple of pieces at play there. The first is, you know, when we're talking about agricultural products, this is probably one of the most non-perishable products in terms of being able to be stored to sort of manage supply-demand imbalances that appear at any point in time. But the wool industry is also, and this probably fair across a number of our agricultural sectors, because of the worst drought in living memory followed by the worst fires, our agricultural production in the state is actually probably at one of its lowest ebbs. So the volumes being produced out of a number of our industries are at a very low level, which means that market shocks like we're seeing in terms of global demand is being, impacting a very smaller or reduced supply, which actually gives more flexibility and more scope for the industry to either redirect product to other markets or to reprioritise alternative marketplaces.
Sorry, Mr Hanson, was that a sort of general observation about all of the sort of primary industries in New South Wales or is that something specific about the wool industry that that's also affected you?
Shelf life for wool is obviously very specific to wool, but the ability of our sectors to withstand some of the disruption out of COVID has actually perversely been aided by a low production base that resulted from the drought.
Right, do you have any information you can provide the committee about the slowdown of production in the wool industry in New South Wales and other sectors as well?
Certainly, we can show you the destocking and what the impact that's had on the number of sheep in the state, for example, over the last couple of years.
Okay. And particularly to sort of offset the, any sort of financial impact on the primary industry sector from COVID-19, what measures is the government implementing or looking at to encourage value-adding in the fibre industry more generally?
Well, best thing we're hoping for is continued good conditions and rain, which we can't control. Look, we partner as a government with Australian Wool Innovation and a number of other industry bodies, both in terms of our research, but in terms of our on-ground support to try and, I guess, work with industry to value-add. But, look, at the end of the day, we can only do so much. We operate in a globalised economy and our producers will look to value-add domestically if there's actually some, an economic imperative to do so. And largely, we will respond to market forces but to industry demand. At the moment, or traditionally, they have looked to export their product and its value-added overseas because of, well, let's be blunt, it's cheap to do that, it's economics. And if, but if that changed, and it may change as a result not just of COVID but the shocks of international trade and relations around the world, then obviously we'd be looking to support industry in its endeavours. But we wouldn't seek to lead on that, we would seek to partner with industry if that was something that industry was wanting to do.
Okay. What sort of partnering are you referring there and what kind of supports would you be looking at in that context?
Well, the support could be in the form of finance, it could be in the support of leveraging our eminent researchers within DPI, who are regarded as some of the best agricultural researchers anywhere in the world. It can involve legislative change or regulatory change to allow an industry to do something that perhaps it's not currently able to do. And it could be to help them potentially access other markets and that might be in partnership with the Commonwealth or going it alone with a particular company or a particular country overseas. I mean, it all, it all depends on what the particular initiative is and what industry's looking to achieve. By and large, a lot of the time, industry just is happy to keep government informed rather than wanting government to be involved. It just depends.
Okay. And at this time, what support is your agency providing to farmers and to industry more generally to help them get into new export markets to try and offset any of the difficulties they're experiencing during the pandemic period?
Yeah, we provide a sort of a concierge service to assist individual farmers and also industry, look at other markets. We obviously work with other parts of government that are involved in the trade space to look at opportunities and work very closely with the Commonwealth. The example I gave earlier is a case in point where we work very closely with the Commonwealth to leverage their $110 million, I think it was, investment in a number of charter aircraft to continue to get some of our key produce for export into countries that now, because commercial aviation wasn't running and there was limited capacity on some of the shipping fleet to get product out. Mr Hanson, did you have anything?
So I think, I think there's two pieces, thanks, Minister. The first one is actually making sure that we maintain the access we have to the markets in light of increasing protectionism and nationalism in terms of support of their own domestic market and own products. So the same question that we're being asked here this morning about what can we do to help promote domestic consumption of domestically-produced product is the same question I'm sure that all countries are asking of their government agencies. So we're working with the Commonwealth to, when we identify where there are potential risk or where we start to get reports of a slowdown of inspections, for example, a sort of increase in the red tape for our exports into markets, we call that out early, we call that out with the Commonwealth and they're able to go in and negotiate using their embassies overseas, but at the same time looking for where a higher value-add market might be for us in alternative marketplaces.
All right. We have run out of time, sorry, for the opposition. Now is the government's opportunity to do their questions in reply?
Come on, Trev.
Asking questions in this field is...
All right.
Fraud was difficult.
Could ask them about your rash that you got from the car.
Another day.
Minister and Mr Hanson, could I thank you both for your attendance today? I actually, record, can I say the engagement and the level of detail that you provided in your answers, Minister, actually directly relevant to the questions, was both refreshing and helpful. And you too, Mr Hanson, we appreciate your cooperation with the committee today.
It hasn't been the universal experience, yeah.
No. But I'm not damning you with faint praise. I genuinely, I genuinely put the, I put it on the record, I think it was, I appreciate the engagement.
Happy to help, always. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
That concludes the hearing. We have a brief deliberation.